And welcome to the August 16th work session. And we will just start it off by just turning it over to Robbie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Bradford Science Work Session, talking about the Ward Boundaries Update. Obviously, this is a project that a lot of people have worked on, including Neha, who's now moved on from the city. I don't remember it, Lina, so who knew last name or how to give your last name because you just got married. But we're also excited to welcome Michaela Kennedy with us as well, who's picked up the bond, working with Simone and a bunch of other people. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Simone and Michaela.
Thank you, Robbie. Well, good evening, Mayor Kelly, City Councilors. I'm happy to be here with you all today officially as the new policy analyst for the city of Hillsborough. The last time I was here, I was an intern. So I'm really happy to be here with you all today to be talking about the council board at the redistricting project. Tonight, I am joined by our City Manager, Simone Brooks, our City Attorney Chad Jacobs, and Associate Professor for Portland State University, Scott Lesenvy, who's going to be joining us via Zoom. Tonight's presentation will cover the project's key points, its processes, the public engagement process, as well as the recommended criteria that came out of this public engagement process. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Simone Brooks.
So good evening, Council. Good to see all of you and good to be here after a really exciting time doing some serious public engagement, which I know you all have been urging us to do in all aspects of our work. And so we have been doing that in regard to the ward boundaries and have some recommendations for you today. But I thought I'd give you some background first, which I'm sure you are familiar with since you are sitting here tonight, which is that there are mayor and six councilors, and you were all elected at large. And if you don't know that, well, anyway. Two councilors, as you know, are nominated per ward. Wards must have substantially equal populations. So that actually comes from our charter, which kind of lands us here today. The decennial census results in 2010 were approximately 91,000 individuals in Hillsborough and in 2020, about 106,000. So that was a 16% increase. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see how that looks on our map of the wards, which is the biggest increase was to Ward 1, where we went from about 32,000 folks to 43,000. So quite a large increase. And I've entered in there the, so you can see it a little more clearly than on the map, what the population is in each of the wards. But the most important part is the population variance, which is between Ward 1 and Ward 2, there is a 33% difference. And between Ward 1 and Ward 3, there's a 27% difference. Next slide. So back in 2011, the City Council passed a resolution 2389 that talked about the process that we would use and the criteria that you would use in terms of redoing ward boundaries. And if there was a 10% difference, we were looking at just minor adjustments or no adjustments at all, and this would come to you in the form of a staff recommendation. But if adjustments of more than 10% were needed, they were looked at in terms of moderate or extensive. And if it was moderate, typically we would go to the planning commission. But based on what we, the information we received from council during the initial presentation, it was, this was viewed as more of an extensive adjustment, where a citizen review board was being asked to be utilized. And really, we were being asked to, and on quite a bit of public engagement. So that really lends itself to the thought of it being an extensive adjustment. So this is just kind of a recap of the process recommendation that we made back in 2021. So we talked about entering into an IGA with Portland State University, thinking of them as a neutral body that could work on the data analysis as well as assist with the community engagement. And we'll talk a little bit later about the Civic Leadership Academy that PSU also works with. Then, of course, we recommended and you encouraged us to do some significant public engagement, which we had done. We were going to then come back after the public engagement with criteria recommendation. If there are changes to the criteria, then the council would need to adopt a new resolution, so updating the 2011. And that would need to be done before the, if that's, if we utilize new criteria to draw new boundaries, then we do need the resolution. Double check it. So then PSU would draft alternatives for boundary maps, which the Civic Leadership Academy would then review along with demographic information, along with reviewing the public, the results of the public engagement and values, and obviously, the criteria that are established by council. And so that, they would then come back at a work, a future work session to provide an update and recommendations on the council board boundaries. And then it would be up to the council to adopt by ordinance the new ward boundaries. So these are the various partners within Portland State University that we work with. So the Center of Public Service for Project Management and Actual Criteria Recommendations, Oregon Kitchen Table supported us with public engagement. The Population Research Center handles boundary map alternatives. And then the National Policy Consensus Center, NPCC, has worked with the Civic Leadership Academy since its inception. And I know at least one city councillor is familiar with that stuff. Sorry, I E councillor base. Okay, and you are up.
So as a disclaimer, oh, and let me turn on my microphone. Sorry, I'm here. So as a disclaimer, I do want to say for the two individuals that took the lead on the public engagement process, our past community engagement manager, Rania Yu, as well as Oregon Kitchen Table, Sarah Giles, are unable to be here today. So I'm going to try my best to cover all the great work that they did. So in order to reach a number of different communities, the city of Hillsborough and Oregon Kitchen Table, OKT, created a variety of ways for people to provide input in multiple languages over several weeks, starting in May 24th, ending in July 10. This was ultimately to hear from people throughout Hillsborough about what matters to them most related to the city council ward boundaries, and also to create opportunities that made it easy for people who might have limited English proficiency to participate. As you can see, we have an incredibly diverse community. And the guidance staff received was to center over less data analysis and community input and engagement to honor our city's commitment to inclusion and equitable community engagement. So with that about, in the public engagement process, we had about 628 people participate in engagement activities. Together, the city of Hillsborough and Oregon Kitchen Table developed a public engagement and community outreach plan that consisted of two public forums in English with Spanish interpretation, one via Zoom, one in person, also reaching out to many, to many community-based organizations and community leaders to reach specific ethnic groups. We were able to recruit four community organizers and vision action network to reach Slavic, Chinese, Native American, and Japanese community members. Additionally, teams from OKT and the city attended the culturally specific and community festival and events like the Louisiana Festival, the Ethiopian Festival, the Juneteenth event, and many more. Lastly, an online survey was made available in four languages. It included English, Chinese, Spanish, and Vietnamese. We also promoted the public forums and online survey through the city's social media channels. So that included Library Reader Board, City Views happening in Hillsborough, Hillsborough School District Newsletter, Washington County Community Engagement Connection Newsletter, a message on the city's utility bill, as well as emails to the community-based organizations. So just in the scan of that word, you can kind of tell all the amazing work that Rania and Oregon Kitchen Table did. So these events provided an opportunity to talk with community members and have in-depth discussions on what's important to them when the city redraws boundaries across all forms of engagement. People were given some background information about what is needed from, why, about the need of the city of Hillsborough to make adjustments to its ward boundaries. And with the public engagement, I wanted to outline some demographic information that we received from it. So out of the 620 people, as you can see there, 48% identified as white, 4% black or African-American, 10% American Indian or asking native, 10% Asian, 2% Native Hawaiian, and other Pacific Islander, 2% Middle Eastern or North African, 19% Hispanic or Latino. Additionally, some cool data that we also collected, which is the languages that were spoken or referred, I should say, for the 600 people, 620 people that participated. So 505 of them preferred English, nine Hindi, 20 Chinese, two Japanese, two Korean, 25 Russian, 95 Spanish, two Vietnamese, eight Ukrainian, one French, one German, one Polish, Italian, one Arabic, and one Yipu, which I did not know the language of, and that was something that I knew. That was where Simone was at, Nigeria. So it's very cool to kind of get that data set. Some more demographics here. About 67% of the age respondents indicated that they were less than 50 years of age in terms of Hillsborough residency. 30% of them indicated that they have lived here less than five years, whereas 29% have indicated that they have lived here 21 years or more. Last here in just in terms of demographics, homeowners versus rent pay. 60% of them indicated that they own, 24% of them rent. So with the public engagement process, we did receive some key findings just in terms of awareness. So council ward redistricting is, you know, there's limited knowledge in the community. And based on the findings that we received, about 52% of them had indicated that they did not have any knowledge about what council ward redistricting was. Also, there was just a little bit of confusion about the impact of these changes, given the large elections. Also, just being unaware of whether ward boundaries divide or keep their community together. So those were just some of the findings that we found just regarding awareness. In terms of priorities, so, you know, a part of the process with public engagement, we had asked them to, you know, what's something that's really important when we're looking at the council ward boundaries? What's priority to you all? And the most common responses indicated that boundaries not be drawn in the way that favors a political party or an incumbent candidate. Also, that, you know, equal numbers of people in each district, as well as not weaken the voting strength of any language or ethnic group. And we'll get to kind of the boundaries and all that stuff here shortly. In addition, a part of the public engagement process was just getting a sense of, you know, the belonging of how community members felt, you know, making sure that that's taken consideration with the process. And they had indicated that neighborhood and school zones are the primary communities to which they felt like that they belonged in. Additionally, they had indicated that same culture and language of the people living in the same kind of housing as them felt like that was a sense of belonging that they felt. And lastly here for additional feedback, you know, we had some questions indicating, you know, is the ward system even necessary? Is it possible to add an additional ward, like a ward four? Also, people were interested in getting more information about patterns of future development, growth, transportation routes, extensions, and all that good stuff. So it's really exciting to get all that feedback, because this is something that we can certainly refer to for future projects, as well as some educational opportunities that we might consider the next time we do this process in the next few years here. So I'm going to hand it over back to Simone.
Thanks, Michaela. This might be a good time to pause in case, ah, yes.
Good question. Maybe I'm going to chat as far as adding a ward with that change, you have a change to charter. I was actually just pulling up the charter a little bit. So maybe I'll get back to you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I would just like to say thank you. That's, that's great. I really appreciate the public outreach, making sure we get multiple languages, making sure we hit a lot of communities. I really appreciate the, the way that demographic data shows. I really appreciate that. That's great.
Thank you. And just because I'm super excited about the public engagement, just, well, just to give you something relative to, the 2035 community plan, last time, during the last update, had 4,000 people respond, and they conducted engagement, significant engagement. And they, with that 4,000, that was over seven months. And we did our outreach for two months, and we got 620 about a topic that many people would think people are not engaged with, and certainly didn't know a lot about. And yet they were, took the time to provide us with feedback, which is pretty exciting. Okay, I'm still left, let's chat. No pressure. Okay. So going back to Resolution 2389, that was passed in 2011, there was, part of the criteria included the Secretary of State directives. And this highlighting here on this particular slide is not by accident. The highlighting for letter D, be connected by transportation links, that actually did not come up as a major issue for community members. It was mentioned a couple of times, but it was not a primary issue of concern for folks. So I just highlighted there, not that you necessarily want to remove it as a criteria, but just to know that that did not come up. There is a bullet there, so no letter, also intentional. This is new coming out of the Secretary of State's office with their redrawing boundaries, that they said to consider newly drawn legislative and congressional district boundaries. So also just know that that's there. So if you were to adopt the criteria from this, add the Secretary of State directives to this next resolution, should you choose to adopt one, this would be an addition.
Did they have any indication of what would be more important than the others? So for example, I know there, there was also the criteria for consideration of school boundaries and neighborhood boundaries. Was, did one outweigh the other, or they just said consider?
We have, there were, can I leave that for Scott when we?
Yes, all those questions should be left to Scott.
And we did establish that, I think, before the work session began. So yeah, I would say that, just going kind of out on a limb here, that some of the things that were already existing criteria were also at the top. So there's, there's two really that stand out that didn't already exist. So I don't know if that'll answer your question, but we'll get there, Chad. You might have an answer.
So the answer to the, any question is yes, you would need a charter amendment to do more ward boundaries, because the charter simply calls for three ward boundaries.
And FYI, when people asked us whether or not we were working on a charter revision, we said not this time. Stay focused, stay focused on council ward boundaries. So in terms of some additional new boundary criteria that came out of the Secretary of State directives, and I didn't mention this. So these are supposed to be considerations. So there is no mandate that these become a part of the criteria that the city of Hillsborough uses, but they are, they're, it is recommended that you consider them. So these two, once again highlighted, are no district shall be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party incumbent elected official or other person. So you won't see this appearing later on in the recommendations, because it already exists, but this did come up for, during public engagement. No district shall be drawn for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. Again, we do not call this out specifically, but it does, it did come up during the public engagement process. Additional criteria, oh, these are, I had to recall, but if you read the council resolution, additional criteria, that should have led me right down the right path. These additional criteria already exist in the current resolution. So minimization of ward disruption and maintain compact boundaries. Again, these are things that you can remove or continue to leave in a resolution, should you choose to have a new one. Consider future expandability, redevelopment, or planning areas, and consider major business institutional areas and neighborhoods that sense of community. And these were listed as potential other criteria in the resolution. So if you'll recall back at the Secretary of State directives, there was mention of communities of common interest. And so based on community feedback, this is what we heard. So they, community members view that as people who live in the same neighborhood as me, people who live in the same school zone as me, people with the same culture or language, and people who live in the same kind of housing. So this is how we categorized those, those pieces that Michaela brought up. But these were directly from community members. So in terms of recommended boundary criteria, so we're really bringing forward two additional criteria, which are that boundaries should not split neighborhoods, and that ward boundaries should, if possible, not split public elementary school boundaries. So those are the two that stand out. And then next steps would be the Civic Leadership Academy. That application deadline is upcoming, so September 5th. Tell all the people you know, please. It's open. September 6th, if there are new criteria, the two new criteria are something you want to adopt, and if you want to adopt the additional criteria that are now in the Secretary of State directives, that would be a resolution that you could adopt on September 6th. We could have that ready for you. On September 9th, we will be selecting applicants to participate in the Civic Leadership Academy. There will be 13 applicants. We are working with Oregon Kitchen Table and the National Policy Consensus Center to develop criteria, so essentially a rubric for selecting Civic Leadership Academy participants to make sure it is reflective of our geographic boundaries, as well as the rich culture that exists. And that, and by culture, I mean that cultures broadly in terms of age, gender, race, ethnicity, language, et cetera. September 28th will be the Civic Leadership Academy's first session. With the Portland State University, we'll be able to provide the alternative maps by time their second session is the latest. This, as I mentioned before, the Civic Leadership Academy will look at the maps, demographics, the results of public engagement, and then some of the key work that has always been done by the Civic Leadership Academy is really learning how to reach consensus. And then November 15th, the Civic Leadership Academy would come before you with, in front, in terms of a council work session to propose a recommendation. And then on December 6th, hopefully, the council would be prepared to adopt a new ordinance with new ward boundaries. And with that, we can go to questions.
Well, I would just say, I really like the idea of looking at elementary school boundaries. It solves some other concerns, which is usually trying not to have boundaries cross major things like max lines, major roads. And elementary school boundaries are often drawn to not cross those things, can, can get into the neighborhoods. And there's enough of them to probably make it a little bit easier to draw the lines, or then there is, you know, legislative boundaries, which are much larger. So I just thought that was kind of the unique idea that I hadn't heard.
Thank you, Counselor.
I was struck in reading over the comments, because some of them were kind of at odds with one another. Each ward should be diverse, and others said, you know, ward should kind of represent a community group type. So I don't know how to resolve that. My other question is, this is an every 10-year process. Is there any opportunity for midterm adjustment of boundaries? If, for instance, South Hillsborough develops as rapidly as we believe it will, additional population shifts the numbers of boundaries?
So I'll provide you with a legal answer is yes, you can absolutely do that. The issue, there's two issues involved there, which I'll certainly defer to Simone. One is what data you're using to show those population changes. And so since the census opens out every 10 years, it's a little difficult to gather that data to make sure it's accurate enough, if you want to stay within that 10% range. And the second issue is just capacity and time, I think, of whether or not, you know, the outreach and all the work that you're doing, if there's enough time to figure that out.
Can I also add really quickly to what Chad said as well? Sorry, Simone, were you going to say something? I would also add too, there's, it's good to have a little more consistency as well, right? So if you change every, like, let's say, five years, that starts to get confusing, I think, for the community. It's also potentially pretty disruptive on the council, right? So we don't know what the new council managers are going to look like, you know, when the council adopts them. It could lead to some, a councillor that's currently in Ward 1, for example, would now be Ward 2. We have no idea. So I think that's why the 10-year mark, that is kind of nice, because it provides a little more consistency. And I wouldn't even say a 10 years, we don't have to do it then either. It's just that we've experienced such growth over the past 10 years that it just makes sense. But we don't have to do it if there's not substantial changes in the percentages by population. It's just, like you mentioned, with South Hillsborough, probably going to see quite a bit of change over the next 10 years of the ward boundaries of populations.
Can this round sort of project growth in a certain boundary? I mean, can they take that into consideration? Because we're, you know, some are more likely, South Hillsborough's more likely to include more people in that boundary than the other place.
Yeah, as you saw in the presentation, one of the criteria that's in the resolution is taking into consideration future planning areas and future growth. The, the key factor there is that you want to stay within a 10% variance between the districts. So if you would take the, whatever ward that South Hillsborough was going to go into, you could have that on the lower end, as long as there's that 10% variance. So as it grows, it's just going to decrease that variance over years without causing greater trends, if that makes sense.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull something up to make sure that I thoroughly.
I have a question about the survey and the responses. Can we see those again? I think there were two slides. So my question about it is, the responses, are they reflecting all the people who took the survey? And just wondering about that, because some of the comments get at different meanings, such as maintaining my neighborhood. That could mean two different things to me.
Counselor, is there a specific slide that you want me to go to?
No, this is good.
Gotcha. From my understanding, yes, it is based on the feedback that we received. So those have 620 people that responded. So it's from my town that it's on. Thank you.
I had a quick question, maybe I missed as I was reading, reading these reports, was, you brought up warding ones that people didn't understand why we have wards? And was there a response being to that, or what was like the general?
My humor wants to come out and say, that's what the charter says. But we were, we were better than that. We were, we were much more complete than that. And yet, what we said is there is a charter that's much like a constitution for the city. And what it outlines is that there are three wards that are established, and that for each of those wards, that there are two councillors. And, and people did react to the fact that they were elected at large and had no real understanding of, you know, what that meant, or what, that didn't seem to make sense to a lot of people, why that would happen, and how are they actually getting the, the proper representation? And, and for that, we tried to refrain from commenting on that too much, so that people could just give us their impressions of the current situations. We're not doing a charter review. If we were doing a charter review, I would say we would approach the conversation differently, and the questions we would ask would be, would be different without all, without also leading the way. Chad, do you want to comment on the representation of the panel?
Unless there's a specific question, I think I'll do a perfect job of answering that with humor and all.
Thanks, Chad.
Because I think I would assume that maybe, without needing anything or whatever, you know, it's just a determine who can bounce from where, who said that people love that more, advisor, residence, or address for that kind of thing. So I can see how that can move into more richer, deeper conversations. People would have a little more. So thank you.
I don't think, I mean, I understand that we're trying to have people spread out, so we don't have all the councilors from City Dreams in, in South Hillsborough or the spectrum. That's what I understand, to make sure that we all spread out. And that was something I would ask of, because it said to try
And, and that was something I wanted to ask of, because it said to try and stay as close as possible, I'm paraphrasing here, uh, to the original wards. And to me, very roughly, the wards are north, south, one, two, three horizontal. It almost seems they need to go vertical in order to spread out the counselors to make sure that there's a more representative, more representation across the city, instead of just all concentrated close to downtown, because that's, without any point, and that's what has happened. Um, and I'm not off, I'm good, yeah? So, I, that, that was something that, that would be incongruous with, you know, what the guideline is, which is to keep it close to what we already have. But if we wanted to have representation across the city, then we would have to switch it from horizontal to vertical. It's a very general statement regarding the numbers and the shapes of the wards right now.
Yes, you can. Uh, and I'm, I'm, and by yes, that was a yes, I hear you. Um, the, I would say that the, the boundary criteria that were, that's on slide 21. We'll go back to that. Um, those, the, those are part of the council resolution as potential additional considerations or potential additional criteria. Um, and those are, that minimization of ward disruption and maintain compact boundaries, um, is, I mean, could be seen as being in conflict potentially with being contiguous. Like, they don't have to be, you could even remove that potentially as a criteria if you were so interested, and just a new resolution would reflect that, so, um.
I, I think Simone, again, has said it perfectly, but the, the key is that the criteria was adopted by resolution, uh, in 2011, which means that this council can change that criteria by adopting the resolution. So if there's any criteria that you don't like or would like to change, now's the time to sort of give that feedback to staff so they can bring back criteria to you at the September 6th meeting and a new resolution.
So I have a problem with boundary criteria F, for the record. Because, uh, you know, i- if, if we're trying to get people spread out across the city, then that doesn't make sense to me. Okay, uh, I have a couple of questions, but I think that they all kind of get to the brief of this. Uh, you know, if I look at, well, I pulled it up because I was looking for, you know, the staff report has a recommendation of these are the, what we would recommend to be included. And what I mean, for me all, is those are things we can include. There's also this other resolution, so is what the, it, is the, effectively the recommendation from the staff report, which is based on the results of public engagement process, we recommend blank, those would replace all of the criteria that are currently in the existing resolution. Is that, is that right? Am I understanding my direction?
Unfortunately, um, no.
Okay.
The answer to that is we made it much more confusing than perhaps it needed to be. Um, and so the, the, we would come to you with a new staff report to more clearly outline. So maybe I'll walk back through these real quickly, because I think that would be the most helpful. Um, so not your fault, Counselor Martin, that's, that's us. Um, so what we are recommending is that the Secretary of State directives be utilized. So, and those are all of them listed there. Um, and then, which includes these two, which also came up, these highlighted ones, all but the transfer, all the ones that are highlighted except for the transportation, um, were actually brought up by the community as well. So if you were to incorporate the Secretary of State's directives, you would actually capture, um, all of those that came up during public engagement, less the transportation, which did not come up. And then slide, um, D's, um, it sounds like there may be some discussion around F. Um, G and H are, all of those, though, are currently in the resolutions, so that, we would obviously leave that up to you as to whether or not you want them to remain in a new resolution. And then finally, one more. These would be the additional criteria that we would recommend, which would be boundary should not split neighborhoods and ward boundaries should, if possible, not split public elementary school boundaries. So I apologize for that confusion, and we'll, we'll get a new staff report out.
No worries, that helps a lot. Uh, so what I would say is I agree with Counselor Pace. I would want the minimization of ward disruption and maintain com- uh, the minimization of ward disruption specifically, I would want that part taken out. Um, I think that we need to have a more, uh, more comprehensive approach to looking at this. Um, one question I have is, okay, got that. Um, this is a, 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 a process question. One of the criteria that I think we would use is no district shall be drawn for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. I understand the reason why that would be included, but in practice, given that we have, like, basically, what does that mean in practice? Because part of me believes that that would actually mean that we would divide ethnic groups into multiple boundaries in order to make sure that they could get as much representation as possible. And because we have citywide voting, like, basically what I'm asking is how would that be used in practice? How, how would that guidance be used, given that we have citywide voting for this, for, for every position?
Three, three words or less?
From a lawyer?
No, probably, uh, it would not. That's just referred to, but I'll let Chad give the legal version.
Yeah, uh, you're, we had a great discussion about this earlier today, actually. And I, you, you summarized it exactly right, because we have at-large elections. It isn't like your typical situation where people are voting just in a single district, so you don't want to, um, dilute their vote by spreading them all over the place. The reason, as Counselor Pace mentioned, that we have different areas and different wards is to diversify the areas from which city counselors reside, or in which city counselors reside. And so, as you mentioned, Counselor Martin, the goal here would actually be in practice to look at how you maximize the opportunity for individuals from certain groups to participate in that process. And that may mean that you sort of actually spread them out throughout the wards, as opposed to trying to pack them within a single ward. Um, and that's the work that folks from PSU are going to do with Assistant Fidger. It means to sort of analyze all that data. We can't tell you today without sort of having the data, how that will play out exactly. Um, but, you know, that's, you know, if that's one of the criteria you, you want to adopt, then that's how that will play out in practice. Um, that they'll just analyze that and try to maximize opportunities for people to participate in that process.
Thank you. And, uh, the, the other thing I would say, which this is both political and not political, is the boundary criteria G, consider future expandability slash redevelopment planning areas. Well, good example of why, I, I, I would argue that should play a lower role, because, uh, I think we're, we're doing elections today. And I understand that the need to plan ahead, but it's, I, I think that it makes sense for us to be mindful of not putting too small a population in a ward for fear of accidentally not having any candidates. Uh, I think that's, that's part of what I think there. Um, and then the last thing I would ask is, you know, the elementary school boundaries, it sounds really great to me in theory, however, I know that, like, when, when do they redraw their districts? I, I, I honestly haven't heard about it in Hillsborough. I know they've done it a, a, around the edges, but I know in Portland, that redraw is like incredibly politic, like, you know, it takes up all the news space and stuff. So how often do they redraw those boundaries if they're going to redraw them in three years, so to speak? I, I'm not sure if that's a, a suitable criteria, because then we might end up kind of being a little off and, 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 you know, creating some friction.
Um, thank you for that. Uh, we would utilize the current boundaries, so we, presuming we, um, do not review the about ward boundaries again until the next census, uh, uh, they could change several times, I suppose, um, over that course of time, but when we move to the next round of board boundary adjustments, if, if our population continues at the way it's growing, um, then if, that could be significant, but the elementary school boundaries may not, they may evolve or not, but we would go with whatever was current at that point in time, as opposed to adjusting of, at various points along that ten-year span.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I, I'm, I'm, yeah, think about that combined with kind of planning for developing areas, how to be able to, to toe that line between being in the present, recognizing that growth's going to happen. Um, okay, that was all I had. Thank you.
One of the things that I had a question about is, um, all of us on council right now, we own homes. We're not renting. Our city is 51%, renting. And so, did the study with PSU take that into consideration that, I think it would be good if somebody was renting and serving on council? So did PSU take into consideration anything about, um, whether or not people rented or were renting?
So the, the recommendations that came from PSU were aligned with the sentiments that were received across all 620 participants. And, uh, as, uh, Michaela pointed out, we had 24% of those who participated were renters, um, which I think, you know, speaks pretty well of, of the level of interest that renters do actually have with council board boundaries. So hopefully that's a good sign, um, in terms of who's interested in running for office. Um, but there, um, if that would, was a criteria you were interested in, um, probably the folks from ECDV or CDD, uh, would know better than I do how, how easy it is to obtain that data, um, around rentals versus ownership. Um, so that might be a difficult one for PSU in terms of drawing a board, uh, boundary map to incorporate, incorporate that into. But the recommendations themselves, um, were just based on what we received from, um, participants. So the housing was one of the criteria, was one of the, the thoughts about intercommon, communities of common interest.
Everything that was where I was, sorry, got lost up there.
Oh, hi, Scott.
Yeah, yeah, I, I could attempt to answer a little bit of that question on behalf of my colleague, Ethan Sherrigan. He's the Director of the Population Research Center. I, I, I think, um, they can, uh, show maps that would kind of indicate a percentage of homeownership versus renting. And so he at least produced maps to, uh, to show this is kind of how it is distributed. Um, the maps are going to get complicated, the more layers you have. So, you know, if you have school boundaries and however you divide neighborhoods, uh, those will be in there certainly. But I think, I think he, he's indicated that they've got pretty decent housing data, uh, from the census results. And so, and a lot of this is, you, you know, uh, you, 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 you map it and you stare at it and see, are there patterns here? And, uh, and then what does that mean? But I think they can do it.
Thanks, Scott. One thing I would like to add, that's a, maybe a, a little tangential, is that this is a public engagement process, which means we view this as really the, as full spectrum of engagement as we can get, which is, once we know the criteria and a resolution has been adopted, this information will go back out to community. So this will be a feedback loop that we'll be able to provide, so that the community knows what we heard. The, uh, OKTU report will be on their website, and we'll have a link to it on our site, so that, that, all of this information will be available to them. And hopefully that can also spark interest from community members. And we certainly have an email distribution list now from, um, people who participated in the process.
And I was just going to say, actually, I agree with Counselor Harris' point about apartments. And looking at the, the maps that we had up there, who took most of that growth in Ward 1, um, in my mind, probably occurred in the Amberland area, which were primarily people that rented some apartment complexes that were coming up. Um, yeah, Amberland, Janus Point, I feel like that area. Um, and had they anticipated that growth, uh, and divided it maybe more evenly among the three wards, perhaps there would have been more opportunity to support renters over this last decade to participate in council. Uh, so maybe something to consider. I think that kind of goes, I think, uh, Resolution Point G. Um, I think I would advocate to keep that in there in order to try to more evenly divide renters and homeowners in the primary divided, knowing as, uh, Scott said, that it's very difficult to take all these considerations together.
Any other comments or questions? I, thank you, Council. Great, great questions. I kept checking off the ones that, uh, that you were asking, they were on my list. Um, you know, as I think ahead, you know, I know the next elementary school boundary adjustment will be in South Hillsborough area, is a, where they open up elementary school number 29. So that will still be, you know, in the ward that I, and, and so, or in the same ward. So I almost think that it's, you know, what are the elementary schools that are now kind of on the borders or would be on the borders of the ward boundaries? Those would probably be the ones to pay more attention to, as opposed to those that are smack dab in the middle of a ward like Patterson and Jackson and, and some schools like that. Um, I am not too terribly concerned, you know, about ward disruption, because since we vote citywide, we still are able to vote, um, for all three wards. And so it's not like when our state representative or congressional, you know, federal congressional districts are changed, that does feel disruptive to me, because now I have a new representative, um, even though I haven't moved. Um, and again, in Hillsborough, we're going to vote for all, all wards, regardless of which ward I hit. And as I recall from a conversation, excuse me, many years ago, um, you know, somebody said the reason that we have wards is just to make sure that three or four, four or five people, kind of from the same block, don't get together unhappy about a project, or wanting a project, or an issue, and deciding the four or five of us, we should run for council. And then you could have a very small, um, representative group, whether that be geographically, demographically, um, in all, you know, in all factors, really making the decisions. And so that's why, um, spreading it out in geographical wards, make sure that you wouldn't have a small, um, a small area from which they're being drawn. And the reason that, um, we vote on all of that is so that you wouldn't have counselors from Ward 1, say the counselors from Ward 2, I'll provide this project for your ward if you do this for my ward. And then all of a sudden, another ward is sort of left out, and, and so there's more horse trading, so it's keep going on. And so I, I think that that's also one reason why our councils tend to work well together, because what we decide on isn't at the expense of another counselor's ward, because we're all working, you know, for the common good and the city as a whole. So that's that oral history, as I recall it. And, um, so again, thanks for your report, very well done. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing what the Civic Leadership Academy, you know, will come with. And any other, any other questions or, or thoughts?
Thank you for the work on this, I really appreciate it.
Can I try to recap just a few things, since we're going to?
Yes, absolutely.
It sounds like we're bringing back a resolution to you. Do I, yes, okay, that's, that was the first one, good. Um, and then it sounds like we're removing, uh, what is currently Criteria F, which is minimization of ward disruption and maintain compact boundaries, adding elementary school boundaries, and now I've already, and right now, we have, we added the boundary should not split neighborhoods, um, but H is actually consider major business institutional areas and neighborhoods and sense of community. So if you feel like those are close enough, then we will simply leave H and not have an addition. Or if you feel like those sound different, we can add it and clarify that language. I, I felt like I heard some, some.
Can you say that again, please?
Well, I, 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 I felt like I heard something, I wasn't clear on what I heard in terms of consider major business institutional areas. So that H is two parts, consider major business institutional areas and neighborhoods and sense of community. The neighborhoods and sense of community is in alignment with what the recommendation we gave, which was boundary should not split neighborhoods. But the former, consider major business institutional areas, I guess that what's important is to understand whether or not you want that, still want that to remain. And e- either way, I would recommend that those be disentangled a little bit, and be like an H and an I.
I don't remember a comment about that, that, that particular caller.
So the major business institutional areas, I'm thinking in terms of the mention of South Hillsborough. So would you like that to remain? And if so, we can just reorganize? So would you like that to remain? And if so, we can just reorganize.
My my perspective would be since the boundaries need to be based on population, the major business and institutional areas could be its own, like its own, its own thing. Because neighborhoods and sense of community are going to be a a larger driver in the population variance. Whereas the major business institutional areas are more of that secondary consideration. Because they won't add population to a given board.
There's not as many schools the further you go towards one hundred eighty fifth compared to the rest of the city. So I would wanna take a closer look at, if we're talking about institutions, I would wanna take a closer look at at the schools that we might be discussing, that might be, you know, created in a new board or, I'm not sure, just wanna have a better sense of what we're talking about. When we're talking about institutions.
I I think we probably won't be able to respond to that until PSU has given us boundary maps and done the the overlays of the various criteria. But we'll be able, the Civic Leadership Academy will look at all of that and their recommendation will address that.
All right. Thank you. If you have subsequent thoughts or questions, feel free to send them to either Michaela or Simone. And then just include Aubrey for Amber to make sure that the rest of us will get those thoughts as well. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Thanks. We will adjourn until seven o'clock and we'll start right up straight up seven. Thanks.
Thank you.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Ralletto.
Here.
Counselor Van Beveren.
Here.
Counselor Al Kair.
Here.
Thank you. We will begin tonight with a presentation from Representative Susan McLean.
She's my representative.
And you know what? She is mine as well with the redistricting. We're glad you still have Hillsborough and and even a little bit more Hillsborough. So, you know, thank you for your service. Thank you for coming tonight to present.
Well, thank you very much. I'm pleased to be here and I haven't gotten a chance to have anything in front of you for the last year and a half to two years, almost three if you really think about it. And so it's really an honor to be here with you today. And why I'm here is because some of my leadership roles over the last two or three years and a couple of them for four or five really relate to a wide variety of our district. And our district, I consider it to be Hillsborough and all Cornelius and all Forest Row, even though you've got a lot of Ledge folks that are here, both reps and senators, I feel that we serve all of Hillsborough and we should be here talking to you about things you care about. So I'm gonna go over three subjects. I only have fifteen minutes. It's going to be a flyover. And then hopefully you'll you'll call me or you'll wanna have conversations or you'll invite me back for more detail on anything that catch your interest. So the first committee that I've been involved in for actually seven and a half, almost eight years is the Ag and Natural Resources and Water Committee. And that Ag and Natural Resources and Water Committee has many, many areas of interest. And we talk about water and all water users, and that means urban water users as well and jurisdictional ones. I know you have a very, very, what I would call aggressive program for our backup water system. And I'm going to be doing that tour very, very soon with the Washington County and some other folks. And they've gotten, they've done a really good job of getting people out to look at your project. So there are hopefully with some of your lobbyists and some of the folks that come and talk to us, ways that we can support and help. Another area of concern that actually deals with this committee is housing. Because housing deals with land use and land use also has some implications for a wide variety of folks, places and geography. And so we want affordable housing, but we also want good use of land. And so there are many things that connect with land use and and housing that we deal with in that committee. There are a couple of things going on now that you are involved in. One of them, of course, is the Industrial or Job Committee that we know that our US representatives or senators actually have really been part of and the governor as well. And we are reviewing that as we look at some of their suggestions in the report that just this week is really out there for people to start to look at. And so we'll be talking about that and I'm very interested in some of your thoughts about that industrial land and some of the choices and opportunities with that work. I'm also very interested in trying to make sure that as we're looking at the DLCD reports back to the legislature, which we asked DLCD to take a look at land use and our land use laws and see if there were places they thought we would have better affordable housing, if we might make some changes or continue to really, I guess I would say, make sure that all of us are really working as diligently as we can to make it possible for some different types of affordable housing for a wide variety of folks, including the homeless and the houseless and and some of the unhoused that have been on the streets for many a years. So we know that you have the the honor and also the privilege and responsibility of using the Metro Bond for affordable housing well and learning from it in its first go around and its first biennium. But all of those things, we wanna connect with the state so that we can get as much as possible out of all the effort and all the resources that we bring to it. The second, and that's, that's all I'm gonna say about that. So if you're interested in more, let me know. If you wanna know what I think about the the work that they've done also on the rules, the transportation rules that help with the governor's executive order, please, we can talk about that too. Because there's a lot, a lot of detail and a lot of overall meat that we need to talk about. Because we have goals of affordable housing and working on environmental concerns and issues. The second committee is the Joint Transportation Committee, and I am a co-chair. And this is a Senate and House committee, and we work on a wide variety of transportation. I was here to be part of the leadership in the Transportation twenty seventeen package. And we are working diligently on finishing up all of the, what I would say, well, promises from the funding for that package and what it would bring to not just the metropolitan Portland area, but the whole state. So we are working diligently on making sure that we continue. Two seventeen has started, you know, that's a blessing and a curse for those of us that live close by. But we're pretty excited about the results of that work so far. We also had the opening for the Abernathy Bridge and two oh five work. And that was also something that we promised would be funded through twenty seventeen and continuous work on really trying to make sure we had enough funds to take care of all the major commitments that we made in that package. As you know, we still are working on the Rose Quarter. We still have folks and we've gotten quite a few folks that needed a break from the table around that topic. And I'm now come back to the table, including the city of Portland. And we are excited to get busy and work again on that project as part of the overall infrastructure that we need for a functional system in this area as well as on the West Coast. Because as we all know, the I five that goes through Portland and goes through our state is extraordinarily important to three countries as well as the whole West Coast, and we go east as well. So it's going to be important for us to continue that work and do it with a green lens and do it with a climate lens. But also realize that we have to deal with freight, we have to deal with connecting transit and connecting safe routes to school and bike and ped and all of the other things that we need for a good functioning type of infrastructure for our state and our cities and our counties and all of the what we would call lifestyle activities as well as our business activities. So that's really important. We also are working on updating how infrastructure is paid for in the state. You know, as you deal with your water system, that we have to be creative. And we also have to be creative. It's not just gonna be the highway fund that was basically gas tax. It's got to be something new, which will include our infrastructure and include our projects for electrification and working with both light and heavy vehicles on some of those issues, both funding issues and also looking for cleaner fuel and looking for ways to really protect and or support all the different types of industries that we have here in the state. So that's a big deal. It's taking a lot of work. I'm still healthy, so I'm sticking around to see how far we can get in another year or two. But understand that this is generational work. And when you're dealing with large infrastructure, you have to find somebody to fill your chair when you're gone. Because it's not work that gets done in one or two sessions or in a term for a city councillor or anything else. We've got to continue to work as an ongoing process with all of those that will be using and our children that will be using some of these very important systems. So those are the two that I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on tonight, but they're important and they're big. And so we need to work on those some more. We need to have more conversation. But I would like tonight to talk about my responsibility as co-chair of the Bi-State Bridge Committee. And there are eight folks from the legislature in Washington State and there are eight folks from the legislature in Oregon. There are half senators and half representatives on both sides. On our side of the river, Senator Reifayer, who is also my co-chair on the Joint Transportation Committee, is my co-chair on the Bridge Committee. We've been working for two and a half years on this reconnect with Washington State to make sure that we can replace the bridge. And there's one thing I can tell you tonight, I believe, has a hundred percent support of the people that have been working on it for the last two and a half years, and that is the bridge needs to be replaced. We agree on that. We also agree that it's important for us to review the data from the last time they made an attempt to replace the bridge. We also need to update the data as it relates to the changes in infrastructure, as it relates to the changes in all the conditions that we deal with, with our purpose and need for both infrastructure and other issues. And that includes equity, that includes diversity, that also includes climate and really having the goal of getting to clean fuel by a particular part of this century. Now, all of those have to be considered in anything we do for the replacement of this bridge. There are, there are a couple of things I wanted to show you, and if you want it and you want, my staff is happy to send this to your clerk and make sure that you all get it or have it sent out to your emails. We had a slide deck, and there's a slide deck for every meeting that we have. So there's always a way to look it up. But this particular slide deck is from the July twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting. And this is one that I just shared in July. And that was where we made the acknowledgement, the acknowledgement that we were going from stage one and two of review of need and purpose and data and that we were going to continue to stage three, where we would go into NIBA and the environmental review of the locally preferred alternative, which was brought to us and was also the suggestion and supported by the Bridge Project Team. And that included a locally preferred alternative that provided what we call the pillars to the basic project that we want to use for a replacement. Now, those pillars take into consideration a number of things. They take into consideration, number one, transit and rapid bus systems that are both developed on both Washington and the Oregon side. And there are differences of opinions on specifically what that rapid bus and transit system should look like. The locally preferred alternative says that we need to get transit across the bridge. Vancouver has agreed to that. And we are working on then more design as we go through the environmental review of what that looks like and where it would be placed. But again, more conversation, more discussion. The second pillar is what do we do with the railroad bridge? And what do we do with marine drive as it as it is affected by the replacement bridge or as it's affected by the needs of both ports? And we're talking about the shipping ports and the airports on both sides of the river. And we are also talking about ports of the Columbia River. So there are many things to consider on the marine drive, how it relates to and is utilized in the next fifty to a hundred years with the ports. We also have to deal with what we call the Coast Guard needs. And the Coast Guard needs have to do with navigation. And this is not new, and they don't have the only say, but they do have a responsible activity, action and review to make sure that whatever we replace the I five bridge with is going to be something that they can not just cope with, but will be safe and will allow for their navigation in a variety of ways. We also have to look at the pillar of Hayden Island. Folks live there, folks work there, and they also recreate around it. And so the Columbia River and the houseboats and Hayden Island are also part of this review and the locally preferred alternative. Part of it is that we could have a full exchange on Hayden Island. We could have a half exchange on Hayden Island, or we could have no exits off Hayden Island. And they would have to come from another bridge or there would have to be some other alternative. The locally preferred alternative says half. So we have an exit going off north one way and south the other way. And that helps us with the number of exits and entrances onto this facility. And that will help us with. And that will help us with congestion issues and will help us with functionality issues. And that was what our our partners chose. And remember, our partners are cities. Our metro are, which is our planning organization on both sides of the river. So there are two of the partners that are. Either cities like Vancouver, Portland, or the uh what we call the planning organizations. And then we also have the providers for transit and rapid bus on both sides. And we also have something on our side of the river that's called the Transportation Commission. And on their side of the river is a regional transportation uh committee. And so all of those folks got to help with the locally preferred alternative. The last area, you will hear these terms, lane. You will hear these terms um dealing with, I need more freight capacity. You will hear terms that say, I need more bicycle and ped and I want safety across the board. And so I have tried to utilize no lanes dialogue and really not talk about how many lanes. I ask folks when we're talking about what do you want to see the bridge accomplish? What do you want to see in that space? What do you want to be able to cope with with new different types of technology that are coming in the future? I'm working in September uh with the director of our Bridge Committee with um. Basically, the most expert folks in the United States and around the world on technology we can expect. In the next thirty to a hundred years. We may need space. For technology, which means like autonomous vehicles, it can actually travel closer than people that. Like ourselves might make a mistake behind the wheel. And it might even look with an autonomous vehicle more like a train as you watch. Heavy vehicles go together down a freeway or down a byway or over a bridge. Because they can be within inches of each other. Because they can be programmed. And so there are issues there. We also have to look at infrastructure striding. Getting people on and off these facilities. What do we need for uh the different types of autonomous vehicles or the different type of technology there? So we need a technology lane. We need, and I did, I said lane space. We need a technology space. We also might need a freight space that looks different than what it looks today. We're trying to, with the locally preferred alternative, analyze it for need and purpose being met, which includes making sure that freight has. Clean space for through trips. We have a lot of local trips. But we also have through trips. So we want to make sure that we clean out the center of the bridge so that those. Through trips can get through and we won't have the kind of congestion that we have seven hours a day right now. The last item is what we call the impact zones on both sides of the river. The impact zone uh goes about five miles both ways. And so we have to make sure that both Washington State and Oregon is really making sure that they have a really good key and understanding. Of what has to be done there because Oregon will be in charge of their part of the impact zone. And Washington State will be part, will be responsible for theirs. And we have to make sure that that all meets. The muster that we need for a A plus grade. So that is what we're working on. And like I said, um. I have, you know, I have paperwork that we could send you that will give you all of the specifics and nobody's given me. You know, I've I've gone two minutes over maybe, uh but nobody's given me the the hook. But I I do want to say that I'm happy to add additional either paper. I'm happy to come back. I'm happy to answer questions right now. It's whatever you may prefer.
Thank you. Um yeah. We're just glad to have you here. We'll give you as much time as you like. Um so I will open it up to questions.
Representative McLean, since you did go over time, will you now commit to a number of lanes? Seriously, you're talking about um the technology lane and the freight lane. So in general, you're talking, I I appreciate the perspective of what you want to see the bridge accomplish. I appreciate that perspective versus fighting over lands. Um so thank you for sharing that and your thoughts about tech because I I do think autonomous vehicles can make a huge difference. So we need to make space. For them, not necessarily land. Um and thanks for the briefing.
Yes, and I appreciate the slide deck being sent to councilor so we can especially transportation committee members.
And I I'm happy also, if you have questions after you read it, uh please feel free, you can have, I some, Andy's got my phone number. And you can also just write a little note to the office, but we're happy to answer specific questions. Now, there are some things we can't answer yet. Remember that we've got the pillars of the locally preferred alternative. It's at two percent design, two percent design. So understand we have in the next year to eighteen months a lot of work. But I'll tell you two things that happened on July twenty first. Somebody said on Friday, why are you looking so happy? I said, because we took a vote and we made it non-event because we just agreed to keep talking and keep discussing. And keep answering questions. So I want people to just take a breath. And understand we've got lots of partners. We've got partners that are the federal government. And the one thing I didn't say and I need to say. We are trying to make sure that we stay on time, on schedule and make sure that we take care of all alternatives. That give us federal dollars from that infrastructure package. We do not want to be in the back of the line. We want to be right up there in the first three and we want to demonstrate that we are competitive for both competitive grants and bridge dollars. And so we are going to work hard and long hours to make sure that that happens. So that is the other goal that we have, keeping everybody at the table, keeping everybody calm. And making sure that we tru- truly have a bridge. That is going to do us well and our children and grandchildren and great grandchildren as they continue on in the next century.
I just wanted to thank you for being here tonight. Um and. Something that stood out to me that you said was that this is generational work. And I think that speaks a lot well to your commitment and also the vision that this group is trying to create in that work. Because you could easily say, well, let's just replace it, right? Um but. You're mentioning technology, things for the future, um to to meet the function of what we want. Because we're going to see that over and over again as we start doing the work along I five and just all these other places. So thank you for that. I wrote that down, but generational work.
Thank you. And you folks have a wonderfully developed and professional planning department. And so you understand what real planning, you know, what serious planning looks like. And uh I you will hear what you didn't study this and you didn't study this and you didn't. Don't, that's not my experience. My experience is that we've studied everything at least three times. And we've had internationally expert advice on everything from a tunnel. To a third bridge. To a wide variety of things. And understand that this replacement does not take away the need for other bridges. It does not take a need for repair of other bridges in the state of Oregon. It does not take away the Washington State question of, do we need a bridge authority? So. The elected officials that are around the tables in both states don't have to deal with this ever again. But um we we will take care of those conversations, but our responsibility now is get the dollars that are available. Get the best design that's going to make the product that's safe and is has resiliency for a wide variety of emergencies. And make sure that we do it in a way that we're thinking about, like you said, three or four generations of folks that will use it.
So to segue off the three or four generations that use it, that's one of the concerns. I know you've heard this and I've heard it too. And that is that this bridge will be built to last for a hundred years. But the capacity for the bridge could be reached by twenty forty. Based on um you know, population growth projections. And so. That would be one of the things that I would just want to make sure that is shared again, that. We make sure that the bridge will last in its capacity. As long as it will last, you know, in its uh structure.
So um that's a great, it's on the record. I heard it loud and clear. And one of the things that I I have to say is again, don't think that you can get that described in lanes. Understand that it means that we are able and capable of using space differently on whatever bridge we build. Because it it may be changing space use. And we are working hard also about replacing the rubber bridge. That's part of the locally preferred alternative. So if we're not just depending on that bridge replacement for everything and we are looking at Marine Drive. And that means that we're looking at capacity or functionality on some of the other pieces of. The particular overall infrastructure package. So I do want to just say it's not just the locally preferred alternative in this particular slide deck.
Thank you. Um now, we know that the Oregon Transportation Commission is looking at tolling on I two oh five. And also the Rose Quarter. Um is there any thought or is that part of the financing plan for the new interstate bridge?
I could take an hour on financing, okay? So what I would like to stick there, and I didn't bring it up today because it feels like this is just so general to state. We are looking at all of the normal, regular type of state funding. So that means like I have a meeting this Thursday dealing with the Treasury Department, the Bonding Council. Uh dealing with um you know, ODOT and and some of the congestion management as well as tolling and congestion pricing. Opportunities. And we in twenty seventeen asked our agency to set that up. That we were going to be using tolling and congestion pricing as part of the package. So we are, you know, right now, you know how it goes. You have to look at the estimates on funding and how long that estimate's good for. Because we don't know how much it's going to cost for supplies and or, you know, any of the things that you need to build a bridge. Or what our labor is going to look like or what our rules on labor risk. So we know that that, you know, every legislature, every group of folks get a chance to redo that. But what we can do is make sure that whatever our package of tools are, are capable of dealing with a changing. I guess I would say a changing project as per conditions. And uh we, but tolling, we're looking at it as a system. Because many of you, as well as Portland and other jurisdictions, have said, don't you give us our pro- your problem. You'll take people off of your facility and you'll put them on our local roads. So we're looking at the bleeding problem that happens in some tolling scenarios. And we're working diligently with our partners. You folks, I'm sure, are involved in the tolling um regional meeting that's coming up here real soon. And so you know that the local uh community is talking about as a, as a group, a metropolitan Portland group. Talking about the pluses and minuses of any tolling and some specific needs that we have. One of them that we've committed is the number one, and that is low income. Users will not be priced out of a place to use to travel from A to B or C. So we have got to work on what that means and there are many technology ways for us to do that. And we can find out what their income is through our taxing system. So uh we've got the ability to work on that and we've made a commitment to that.
Thank you. Um also, I want to applaud and say thank you for, I guess, the, just the sense of urgency that this is receiving. Because, you know, we hear President Biden speak of it often, Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg also speaks of it. And it's not often that there is a project in our state that receives presidential. Attention beyond just a specific speech that somebody's written through him. Um and so because it is. Um what's in a generation might, um I'm grateful that there's a sense of urgency to make sure that we are ready for that. So. And any other last comment? Yes?
Uh I, my, I do not have a comment related to the uh interstate bridge replacement. Uh I have a comment related to uh recently adopted transportation rules or soon to be adopted transportation rules uh related to climate friendly and affordable communities. Say to, more than happy to give your thoughts on that. I'd love to hear that, especially given that it is an executive order. Legislature has yet. Know, provide input on them.
Right, and so that's a question to me? Yes, okay. My thought is, is that we're in the middle of a governor race. And we don't know who's going to be governor yet. And each one of those candidates, I have, even in my education world, I have three different scenarios of what I'm going to work on. In twenty twenty three, depending on who that governor is. So first of all, we don't know much about if that executive order is going to hold or not. And so that's number one. Number two is that the um the transportation rules, we're supposed to, you know, bring some. Some products for better climate, um you know, action. But we have, those haven't been proven yet. And you have a position, Andy has been good enough to get me the letter, that you have sent off to the DLCT. And you folks have it. And so it's a situation where I want to work with Hillsborough and other jurisdictions. And uh Springfield is big into this comments, you know, to comments with them right now too. And so it's going to be important for all of you to be vocal about how you are feeling about what you think can be successful or not. And Andy and I talked about the fact that, you know, and, you know, the easiest way to say is it's an unfunded mandate, okay? We all know we use that, right? And sometimes it's true and sometimes it's a little bit true. But in this situation, that work is is heavy. We know it's heavy and we know changing our master plans are heavy. So we've got the, we've got the cost issue, but we also need to be really thorough about the things we know we can do. And be honest about it. Say, yes, we can do that. There may be a transitional need and a transitional timeframe that we want to work with you on. But we can do it and we want to do it because we want good climate and clean air too. But if there are true problems, and one of the areas that I have some concerns about, so this is answering your question. I have concerns about parking. I get more comments and emails about parking from both businesses. That are small businesses and homeowners that are saying they won't even drop me a driveway. And they don't have to, it sounds like. And it's true. There's some legislation that just is going into effect. That it's, it it's not required for them to have so much parking. It's an option. So some of that, I think we need to review a little bit more. And I think that there's some things that we can do to make it work, but I think there's some real problem solving. That would have to happen in different sizes of jurisdictions to get it to work. So I'm hoping um to answer your question that that you guys want to work hard on that because I would too.
Thank you. And really appreciate your advocacy and representation of us in the state. I think it's made a big difference and and have made our community further. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Would, would you care to share an email address for anybody who might also want the slide decks or to contact you? About parking or anything else?
Um could I just ask you to email my, my office and I will, I will send that out. The email and all of the things that should be there because Carolyn likes me to do it a certain way. Um she likes to be able to get to uh the email as well. And we only have to go through duplicate to get into our own computers. Let alone staff. So let me give you the right email. And one that we both can work on and I'll also send this out and we'll send it to everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you for all the time.
You know, likewise, thank you for all of your time. We appreciate it. It's still light.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh right, we will move on to our public comment and uh individuals and groups wishing to speak will be recognized at this time. So if you're here in person and wish to speak, we ask that you fill out one of our yellow cards. Uh if you are online, then uh please raise your zoom hand and I will watch for that. Um we have only one person who is registered to speak and that is in person. So as any clerk comes, I'll just remind that it's uh, you know, three minutes and an opportunity to share. Thoughts and comments with council, but not necessarily a time for council to engage in conversation and if there's follow-up, it needs to be done. Our city manager will take care of that.
I am, I am a, I am um a self advocate in the city of Hillsborough. Advocate for people with developmental and intellectual disabilities. I'm on the Oregon Council on Developmental Disabilities. I'm a member of OSAC and. When I go down Maple Street, one of the houses has garbage around it. Eleven oh seven Maple Street. Close to the end of the street. Um there's garbage all over the yard and that. And they, it's this terrible mess that you see on Maple Street. And it's disgusting to look at that garbage in that. I don't know what the people that live in there are doing to that house, but. They need, the owner needs to be conscious. but they need, the owner needs to be contacted in that to get them people to clean it up. It kept, it kept up because it's disgusting when you go down the road and it's bothersome. And I, I am a self-advocate, and I want to help make things better in Hillsborough for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And I want to volunteer my time in the city of Hillsborough, like volunteering somewhere, like at the fire department or the police department or something, doing, or volunteer at the city hall. I don't care, but I would like to get involved with my local city government. And if you had, I would like to get involved. I would like to be a self-advocate on the city council at some time. And I don't know how to go about that, but I would like to be a self-advocate so I can help people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in the city of Hillsborough to feel welcome in that, in the city of Hillsborough. Thank you for my time.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. And I know we have a, a meeting scheduled for later this week, and we'll be able to talk about more of these issues in depth. And I think I saw our city manager writing the address down, and I expect they will be having code enforcement going by, just to follow up with your concern. So thank you very, very much. And Aubrey, anybody else? All right, thank you. Then with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. And the items on the consent agenda are normally considered in the same motion. However, if any councillor would like separate consideration, we will honor that and move it to a separate agenda item. Is there any requests for separate consideration? And seeing that we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. So moved down.
Second case.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. We will move on to public hearings. Agenda item 5.1, consider Finance Committee's recommendation to adopt a resolution to re-adopt the current citywide fees and charges schedule and repeal Resolution 2628. Resolution number 2785 is available, and I will open the public hearing on item 5.1. No one has registered to provide testimony, and no written testimony was admitted. No yellow cards or Zoom hands, correct? All right. And with that, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2785?
So moved down. Second case.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Are there, is there any discussion?
Yes. I wanted to at least share my thoughts that I, I shared in the Finance Committee, which is I, I don't believe that we as a city should go for full cost recovery, so charging the full amount for public records for us. I, I think that there are other goals that we achieve by making sure that we're a transparent and accessible organization. And one of the reasons why I feel comfortable voting for this is after that meeting, our city recorder had mentioned that out of the hundreds of requests, only four were charged in the last year. So it makes me feel comfortable that this, we, we have worked out a system that is accessible for all. But I just want to share my perspective that I, I still, e- even with that, I still believe that we shouldn't charge that much. However, given the reality of how, how rarely we do, I feel comfortable voting for this.
Thank you. Any other comments? The only thing I would add to that, even though I'm not voting, which is a tie, is that if there are nuisance requests, you know, where there are, you know, over and over and over, I think that then it is more than reasonable to recover the cost of that and in doing so affect the taxpayers, you know, and, and resources as well. So perfect. Thank you. All right. Any other, any other discussion?
I think just kind of followed up the conversation that happened was why would these in first place, like you said, only a handful were actually charged? Because these are more consideration of staff time that goes over the whole.
The first thirty minutes.
Very good. All right. Then we have a roll call.
Councillor Pace?
Aye.
Councillor Ralletta?
Aye.
Councillor Ben Bevan?
Aye.
Councillor Martin?
Aye.
Councillor Allen?
Aye.
Councillor Alcare?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 2785 is adopted. Agenda item 7.1, consider adopting an ordinance pending Section 9.32.095 of the Hildesborough Municipal Code to allow the city manager to create exceptions to the prohibition of smoking, vaping, and tobacco use on city property when necessary to serve the public interest. Ordinance number 6411 is available. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 6411?
So moved down. Second case.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I promise I won't do this for everyone. I think the reason why, at least want to say it, I think it's important for us to recognize why we have this restriction and what this does. It's basically saying that we acknowledge that people are going to smoke, and in certain areas of the city or certain uses, we think that's okay, but in other places, we don't think that's okay. So I think one of the things I would say for this is to have us, the city recognize what are our public health goals? What is the reason for doing this? Because if the reason is to stop people from smoking, this is not going to help. And I don't know. I, I just, I want to bring that up as something that maybe we discuss at a later date related to public health, that the city's relationship to it in whole.
Thank you.
I guess I would just say, the difference for me is that this is a little different than the public park. And so I guess I'll just leave it at that, but we can have a discussion later. I could maybe, I think it's a good point, and it's important to clarify, maybe for those that haven't read the staff report. In this specific case, as we look into building a shelter in the city, one of the things that we've learned from other shelters and other areas is that if you don't have a designated smoking, smoking area, that those individuals will typically go out to the sidewalk, and then it's affecting everybody that goes by them. And so this will hopefully provide a, a better environment for everybody else around that shelter area by providing a specific area within the area, within the shelter area to have smoking allowed. So that's why we're trying to do this, is, is consideration of everybody else that will be around the shelter as well.
Thank you, Robby. Any other questions or comments? Then we have the roll call, please.
Councillor Alcare?
Aye.
Councillor Allen?
Aye.
Councillor Martin?
Aye.
Councillor Pace?
Aye.
Councillor Ben Bevan?
Aye.
Councillor Ralletta?
Aye.
Thank you. The first reading of ordinance 6411 passes. Second reading and consideration of final adoption of the ordinance will be September 6th. Under second readings, agenda item 7.2, Community Development Code Amendment 004-22 SCBP Medical. Consider the planning commission's recommendation to approve the ordinance for a community development code amendments to update medical terminology, clarify categories for medical uses, and permit rehabilitation facilities in the SCBP Station Community Business Park and SCI Station Community Industrial Zones with limitations. Ordinance number 6408 is available. Do I have a motion and then a second to enact ordinance number 6408?
So moved. Second out.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? And then we have a roll call.
Councillor Ben Bevan?
Aye.
Ralletta?
Aye.
Alcare?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Pace?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance number 6408 is adopted. Agenda item 7.3, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 001-19 Jackson East. Consider proposed comprehensive plan amendments to Section 22 Comprehensive Plan Act. Section 23 Incorporated by Reference, Section 30 North Hillsborough Industrial Area Community Plan. And Section 32 Transportation System Plan for the Jackson East South and Jackson East North Subareas. Ordinance number 6409 is available, and I believe staff has communication to council.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity for a staff correspondence on this item. The council closed the public record on the Jackson East policy package at its last meeting on August 2nd. This results in no new information being able to be admitted into the official record and considered as part of the decision process. Since the close of the record, staff identified two data errors from the materials presented on August 2nd that do not alter staff's recommendation, the policy package components, nor the compliance with the approval criteria, but do warrant clarification for the sake of public awareness and transparency. The first was regarding the example in Group B of the property comparables, which was for properties that are in the UGB and in the Jackson East Subarea located at 6375 Northeast 68 Place. Staff's initial analysis showed two pieces of information, which showed upon Zillow and Washington County Assessment and Taxation Cartography information. Some data sources showed a one-acre parcel, while the map marker in Zillow in the data in maps with Washington County showed three, approximately 3.1 acres. When discrepancy occurred, staff deferred to the data shown within county cartography information. Staff clarified with Washington County Cartography that there was an error in the county's data and that the approximately 3.1 acre data did not reflect a property line adjustment that had been done on the site dating back to 2000, resulting in a property being one acre in size, in fact. This discrepancy has been clarified and increases the per, the per square foot price of this sale to approximately $28.12 per square foot. The second was in regarding the example in Group C of that same analysis for properties inside the UGB and outside or inside the industrial area for the property located at 4,700 Northeast School Avenue. It was confirmed to have a sales price of $400,000 from April of 2020, not the $583,800, as noted in the slides presented to council. After evaluation, it was determined that this was an unintentional data entry error by city staff that was not caught in our final reviews. The erroneous amount was likely derived from the Zillow estimate rather than the record sales price and indications. The correct sales price of $400,000 decreases the overall per square foot price to $9.57 for that sale. The average cost per square foot by category did not change substantially with these corrections, but category A remained unchanged. Those were properties that were outside of the urban growth boundary at $3.92 per square foot. Category B, those properties that are inside the urban growth boundary and within the Jackson East Subarea, increased with the change from $7.58 per square foot to $9.99 per square foot. And category C, those properties inside the urban growth boundary and already designated industrial, decreased slightly from $10.55 a square foot to $10.20 a square foot. Overall, these corrections do not substantially change the findings or staff's recommendation as proposed in the staff report and package. Category C continues to see the highest average per square foot cost as presented by staff in the presentation and materials, with the new average of category B increasing to be closer with category C in total amounts. The data also continues to demonstrate that properties in all categories are saleable, do not appear to be losing value, and that those in B and C are saleable as residential and/or industrial properties. I would like to reiterate that none of this refined information is in the official record. If council desires to include it in the official record, it would warrant reopening the record in the public hearings process. While our staff strive for perfection, I apologize for these errors and hope that the clarifications demonstrate the good intention of our work and the commitment to public transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chad, as part of this also, was there something that I think you needed to just affirm with council?
Good evening, Mayor and Council for the record. Chad Jacob from the City Attorney's Office. So as you just heard Dan say, that the record was closed at your last meeting, which means that none of the information that you received between the last meeting, including now your votes, by including the information that Dan just presented, can be taken into consideration as part of your decision-making process unless we reopen the record. So if you feel that you need to take this into consideration as part of your decision-making process, I would advise you to reopen the record, which would require that we provide notice, not take a second vote tonight, but provide notice to others, allow them to come in and provide comment on these issues. I, I'm not recommending that unless you are saying that you absolutely need that information as part of your decision-making process. If you don't think you need that information, then what I would advise you to do is affirm two things tonight before you take your vote on 7.3 and 7.4. And again, those, both of those items were combined in one public hearing, which is why you can just say this one time tonight. You don't need to say it before each vote. But I would ask you to affirm first is that you are willing and able to base your decision solely on the information that was presented as part of the record during your last meeting, and none of the information that you're hearing tonight or heard in between last meeting and tonight is, is going to affect or influence your decision. The second thing I would ask you to affirm is that, should you have known about this error, that it would not have changed your decision-making process from your vote last time or your vote this evening. So those are the two things I would ask you to affirm. And the, the reason for that is part of this transparency, the, the reason that Dan came forward tonight is to be transparent with the public and make sure that everyone was aware of these errors. And the same thing here for transparency purposes. So everyone is fully aware that you are not going to take this into consideration as part of the process and that your decision really would not have changed if you would have known about this error during the decision-making process. I don't have to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. So, thank you. Then with that, I will ask for a motion and a second. And if we have the motion and the second, then during discussion, we will affirm those two things.
I have some quick questions. Did you hear the first part of Chad? There's two parts, the willing and able piece. Did you refer, did you refer that?
Sure. So you are required to base your decision solely on the record as it was presented during the hearing. And so the first part is that you are willing and able to base your decisions solely on the record as it was presented during the hearing.
Thank you. So moved.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Why yes.
Councillor, you want to start? We'll just go around that way. Well, I'm sorry that the errors were made. You don't believe they were intentional. I'm hoping it didn't undermine the discussion with the group of property owners in terms of their trust and what the city's doing. I don't think they should because they don't think the errors were made deliberately or consciously. My hope is, this is a difficult vote for me. My hope is that the dialogue between the city and the property owners in Jackson School will continue and that some sort of agreement about the processes and the commitments going forward can be, can be made and understood by both parties. So we can clear up any uncertainty about how this area is designated, what the future is going to look like, as much as we possibly can.
I agree with what Rick said. I don't think the error was intentional. It was a mistake. It doesn't change my mind and how I am in a vote. And so I am not going to take into consideration this new information as a basis for my decision about this. Have it covered for me, Chad?
It wouldn't change your decision on your basis.
It doesn't change my decision and basis for my, thanks.
Thank you. And Councillor Ben Bevan, I'm not sure if I heard you affirm those two things that may be, that may be specific, and that's fine. But I also wanted to make sure that, you know, that was also your intent.
My, my, my decision was based on the entirety of the information that was presented during the public hearing and prior to that. So I am willing and able to make a decision tonight for me to say.
All right. Thank you. Councillor President Allen?
Yeah. So I am really honestly frustrated.
Yeah. So I am really honestly frustrated that staff made this mistake. I know that there's a lot that was going on and what's gone into this over the years, but I do think that these numbers, when presented to council, should be checked and double-checked. I understand that. I believe that it wasn't intentional, and that we're just using different numbers put in that data. But I hope that we can use this as a learning moment in the future, especially with really important decisions. That we, if council highlights information that is important for decision-making, that we make sure that we check, double-check, get it right, not for just the trust of council, but the trust of the public. That being said, I am going to base my decision on the public record that was presented. And primarily, that's because even with those members being changed, it doesn't change the overall narrative of the three cost comparisons that were presented to us. So...
Wouldn't change your vote.
Wouldn't change this on the public record. It's based on the record.
Thank you. Council President, Councilwoman.
I am willing and able to base my decision solely on the information presented as part of the record as it was presented during the hearing. None of the information between last meeting and now will influence my decision tonight. And should I have known about the error, it would not have changed my decision-making process now or last meeting. And also, thank you staff for recognizing the error, saying in a public forum. I really appreciate that.
Council base.
I'm willing and able to base my decision solely on the record as it was presented. My decision was based on the entirety of the record and the errors and additional information pointed out by community members. Did not impact my decision on August 2nd or this evening, August 16th.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rilett.
And so my vote will be willing to reflect the record as presented at the last meeting and taking and I won't be considering the information presented tonight as it wouldn't have changed my vote for tonight. And thank you for acknowledging those discrepancies. Because as that council president, Helen, had said, you know, it is, it is part of an important decision-making process, both as how we present ourselves as well as how we vote upon a narrative that it presents. But thank you very much for the work that was done on this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing that, maybe we have more.
Councilor Rilett. Aye. Councilor Allen.
Aye.
Councilor Pace.
Aye.
Councilor Martin.
Aye.
Councilor Ben Bevren.
Aye.
Councilor Al Kier.
Aye.
Thank you. Order number 6409 is adopted. Agenda item 7.4, Community Development Code Amendment 001-9, Jackson East Considered Proposed Community Development Code Amendments for the IS Industrial Sanctuary Zone, North Hillsborough Industrial Area Plan District and several other community development co-sections in the Jackson East South and the Jackson East North sub-areas. Order number 6410 is available, but I have a motion and second to enact order number 6410. So moved, Allen.
Second. Pace.
Thank you. And the affirmations character this as well. Is there any discussion or any other comments? Seeing that, maybe we have more.
Councilor Martin.
Aye.
Councilor Pace.
Aye.
Councilor Allen.
Aye.
Councilor Ben Bevren.
Aye.
Councilor Rilett.
Aye.
Councilor Al Kier.
Aye.
Thank you. Order number 6410 is adopted. Under new business for agenda items 8.1, 8.2, I'd like to invite staff to give a brief presentation prior to consideration.
Good evening, Council. Reem Archie, one of the city managers. We're going to give you a quick update on where we are with the Ron Tock Field Expansion Project. With me I have Sean Harrison, Public Works, and Suzanne Lenee, our finance director. Sean is the lead for the project of the city and Suzanne is making sure we don't get trampled. So I will go to the next slide, please. So just a quick overview of how we got here. Most of you are aware the Hops got elevated to the HI division. Their season kind of expanded a couple more months, maybe to September. With that, they have some new facility requirements that they have to meet as set by the MOB that needs to be in place by the opening season of 2024. With all these improvements that we need to make, it's created a number of opportunities to think a little bigger, look at things from more of an entertainment perspective rather than just baseball and see if there's any other opportunities. Our project development approach throughout this whole process has been, it's a partnership. The Hops are a great community asset. They've been here with us for 10 years. The community loves them, and we want to make sure that we're both successful in what happens in the future. One of the things that we wanted to make sure with this process was that there's no loss in the public's ability to access recreational amenities. So we just wanted to make sure that was central to the project as we continue to move forward. With that comes some lost use because the Hops have extended their season. They are looking at maybe having some more operational and management control over on Tock Field. So we want to make sure that we mitigate that loss somewhere else. As we start thinking about what happens on this site and the city's financial contribution, we need to make sure we weigh that against other priorities. But we do recognize that with creating a more regional entertainment destination does have additional benefits. And then the last one, which I think speaks for itself, the project has to be financially sustainable. So where are we since the last time we came to you? We selected a contractor. One of the things that we hadn't done at the time was bring a team on to help us build this project. So we selected Mortensen, who will also have SRG and Populous as part of their team. Mortensen is a constructor. Sean will talk a little bit more about the design work. As you are aware, the city has officially, but in principle, committed about $40 million, $10 million of that would be the city's investment, and $30 would be financing. Suzanne will talk a little bit more about that. The Hops are still exploring other funding options in the private market, looking at state funding and other sources. A project website is going live. There's a link to it right there. And we're here tonight to talk to you a little bit about an interim agreement that we want to put in place with the Hops, just to memorialize some of the things that we've been talking about. And then Sean will also talk a little bit more about the agreement that we're going to be entering into with Mortensen. One of the things that we wanted to highlight was quantifying lost use and how we're going to mitigate for that. So we're still in the process of defining exactly what this looks like. But like I mentioned before, the Hops have three more months of use of the facility as of today. So there's some lost use that we had in the facility, so at least and at minimum, we need to make that up. If the Hops do end up taking over the Ron Tock Field and having full or even partial control of the operations, the programming and the maintenance, some of the events and things that we could host at that site need to be hosted somewhere else. So on the right is an example of some of the options that our parks department has been looking at. That's or at Brown Middle School, where there's that empty piece of land where the track is. They've been partnering with the school district to look at options of what we could do there to turn it into more of a more usable field. So again, this is just an example. They've evaluated a couple of options. We're still in the early stages of quantifying how much will the project pay towards this, if any, depending on how much use goes. But it's still a work in progress as we continue with the project. I'll pause there just in case anybody has any questions. All right. I will turn it over to Sean to talk a little bit more about the design work and where we are in the project.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be taking you through some updates on the project and design proposal and a quick look forward. So back in Maine, we awarded Mortensen with the Design Build Contract along with SRG Partnership and Populous Architects through a competitive request for proposal process. This contract also served as our master development contract with them. So all future work and improvements will be done through design amendments or contract amendments. With this master contract, it also included a 90-day pre-design phase scope for $295,000. At the end of, or at the beginning of August, we completed this work. And so we're ready to start moving into design development. The scope that we have completed included an analysis of the existing building, program study and verification for shops, market research analysis, development of a target value budget and program, as well as planning the milestones and phases of the project. So at this point, we're ready to start.
It has a bit of a pause.
There you go. Okay. So now we're ready to jump into design development. So we're proposing to move forward with the 35% design package. But due to the fact that we're still developing the scope of the project, we're adding in a 10% review and decision point. We will be reviewing at 10% with the Hillsborough Hops. And we won't proceed past 10%, unless we agree in writing, taking in all the factors of the project and funding and what have you. This will allow us to factor in any changes to the scope of the project, any developments in funding, as well as any changes in agreement terms. And then that allows us to make adjustments at that point and move forward. We're doing this based on the current project scope as it stands today, which is still very much in conceptual state and not ready for public consumption. The cost for the 10% design is 1.875 million. The cost for 35% design is an additional 2.625 million or four and a half million total. If the scope of the project changes dramatically at the 10% checkpoint, then theoretically, the cost of proceeding further in design should change and reflect the change of scope and value of the overall project. So I'm going to go through the scope of the design amendment here. You have some of it in front of you and some of it in the staff report. It's a lot, to be honest. So I'm going to hit some of the high points. We receive floor plans. We receive renderings, concept images, and building elevations that we'll build to share. We will receive the demolition, structural, civil, interior, and building design packages and plans. And in the building design packages, that includes things like architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, low voltage, sustainability, and fire protection. We also receive updated schedules and cost estimates at all key milestones. Receive value engineering reports, constructability, and market reports. We'll continue to refine the project program and its requirements. We'll conduct sustainability goal setting. And we will continue our engagement with COVID subcontractors and small businesses. And this scope also includes some early design work or early work, early, sorry. This includes design work for early work packages such as infrastructure relocation.
All right. Can I ask a question for that last slide? You talked about if scope at 10% changes dramatically, the cost will change too. Does our funding commitment in that 4.5 million change? Or is anything over and above that 4.5 covered by the Hops? Since presumably that would entail private funding.
I would say that...
I think you are correct. Anything above that four and a half million, the thinking would still be, I think that we could still be looking up to our 10 million maximum that we would be putting in a project, keeping in mind that that also needs to cover the lost use. Right now, our amount of money in the project is just over 1 million at 25%. So that's a good question, but I think that Sean was more referring to if the project were to be reduced in size and then that design work would also be reduced. Okay, that helps. Thank you.
And finally, I wanted to share some of the current project goals and our milestones to look forward to. So we've structured this project and the contract and its top design amendments to manage risk as much as possible. I recognize, you know, the public funding going into this, and we want to be very careful. We're currently aiming for 10% design completion in about eight to 10 weeks. And we're targeting 35% design by the end of '22. And lastly, our goal is to start construction in the second quarter of 2023 and meeting the Major League Baseball player development requirements by the 2024. That's all I have, and I'll pass it on to Suzanne.
Great. Thank you, Sean, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Smith, over here. So does anyone else think that Sean's job is more fun than my job? Kind of starting to think so. So nothing on this slide should look really new to you. We talked about this. This is almost the exact same slide that you've seen previously. And of course, we talked about this during the budget process as well. So we've been consistent with the city's commitment to the remodel of the Ron Tock Field, which includes, and I'll repeat what has been said previously by Rahim, 10 million in city funding towards the project and mitigation of any lost use of the facility, community use, and the additional 30 million to be financed on behalf of the Hops to be paid back over time under terms yet to be defined. In order...
May I interrupt you, please?
Yes, please.
I think it's really important to point out the TLT piece of that.
Yeah.
Do you mind expanding on that? So everybody in the room knows what that means.
Absolutely. Yeah. That is my plan.
Thank you.
So I just want to remind the city council here that in order for us to issue debt, because our plan is to go out to market and issue up to $40 million in bonds to finance our $10 million share and the $30 million that we'd be financing on behalf of Hops, we will need to be back in front of the city council at a later date with an authorizing debt resolution. So we haven't taken that step to date as staff and team continue to nail down the size and scope of the project, which, of course, includes the Hops looking to secure additional financing beyond $40 million that the city has, has agreed to commit in terms of financing. The city's $10 million contribution to the project will be anchored to the city's transient lodging tax. After 2003, legislation was enacted that required 70% of all transient, new transient lodging taxes to be dedicated to costs of promote tourism and related facilities and in turn increase the stays in our local hotels. The current total tax is 13.5% on a night stay in a Hillsborough hotel. 3% of that is a city-specific tax that went into effect sometime in 2016, '17. And 70% of that 3% tax needs to be anchored to tourism promotion. The city used 8 million towards the Wingspan Event Center, and this would be the second project that we'd be able to utilize this funding source towards. Our transient lodging tax forgiveness, as you guys heard me say during our budget review, it took a hit during COVID and as well as some other revenue line items in our general fund. But we're definitely starting to see that rebound. I got some numbers for you. So giving you some perspective, pre-COVID, we received about $1.9 million from our 3% city tax, and that was in 1819. It went down as low as $923,000 in fiscal year 2021. And for the year that we're just finishing, we still have one more month to commit. And for the year that we're just finishing, we still have one more month to collect as the revenues lie behind. But we believe that we'll be over $1.6 million, probably getting closer to $1.7 million. So we are definitely going in the right direction in the revenues. The city, as you know and I've seen, we've really grown in the number of hotels we have. I did a Google search tonight. I came up with 17 hotels. Plus, we also received TLT taxes on other operations, including VRBO, Airbnb, and other companies like Xperia. So any questions before I move to that address? Okay, I only have one more slide here and then I'll turn it back to Rahim. So what we're here asking you tonight is two things. We're asking you, we have two items here. One is to ask for you all to approve an amendment, sorry, a short-term cost allocation agreement as well as amendment to keep the design work going forward. Turn this over. It's my notes. So as you can see from what you, the presentation tonight, we are working closely with the HOPS to keep this project moving forward. And in order to keep us moving forward, we feel that this interim cost allocation agreement is the way to do that, to help us keep the timelines moving towards meeting the MLB timelines. So the ask tonight is that you approve this interim cost allocation agreement that will allow us to reach the 10% design to better define the costs and scope of the project. This agreement will also allow us to further design, as Sean was pointing out, to get to 35% if both parties agree in writing. And any additional funding is defined and secured by the HOPS. The cost split is 75% to the HOPS and 25% to the city on both the 10% and the 35% design work. Again, this will buy us some time to continue while the HOPS continue to pursue other financing as well as allow us time to negotiate the final agreement, which will need to include all the detail around operations, including roles and responsibilities, sharing the common space, including parking, restrooms, et cetera, payment of the cost of the financing, how that will be paid back over time and over what term, as well as how future capital costs will be handled. So there's a lot to be negotiated. And we felt to keep this moving forward, it was really important to enter into the short-term cost allocation agreement. In the meantime, again, this will allow us to afford. But I think it's important for the city council to understand we are assuming some risk here and we are doing our very best to mitigate that risk. I think the biggest risk is that the project doesn't move forward. And that we will have incurred costs for design up to 10%, possibly up to 35%. But hopefully, we wouldn't get there not knowing the project, without a project, knowing the project's going to move forward. But I think it's important for the council to recognize we do have some risk here and we wanted to share that this evening. And that is all I had to share. Any questions for me?
Councilor Reese and then Councilor.
So thanks for talking about the risk. And I was wondering, do we have specific trigger points of when we would pull if it's not going to happen? For example, if the HOPS don't secure the rest of their funding they're trying to get.
So in agreement, we have a 12/31/22 timing for them to have secured additional financing. So that is a trigger point. We also need to enter into an agreement in the contract currently as written as March 1st, 2023. And that's that final agreement. Now, if we don't enter into that agreement by then and we continue to pursue the 35% design, then we will be in that position of going to HOPS their 75% share of the costs that we've incurred to date.
Okay, thanks. I saw two dates. I saw the December and the March, and I just want to get clear. So thank you. So my main question is about better understanding mitigating loss of use. But before I do, I want to say thank you for working on this. I think it's a great project. I really appreciate the explicit acknowledgement of risks. I think that's an important piece of this. But also feel that that risk is acceptable given the combination of TLT, the fact that we have a backing funding, we're going to use full faith and credit, and the fact that we have a very strong partner in the HOPS. I think that those things are enough to mitigate the risk for me. But I am glad that that's an explicit choice because we need to. Mitigating loss of use is my question. Can you talk more about that? Why are you brown? If it's about providing longer-term improvements, how are we working to make sure that those long-term improvements kind of can last? You know, we can get as much juice out of this as possible since it is a sizable amount of money.
It is still a work in progress, so I'll start with that. Part of the challenge is quantifying loss of use. It depends on how you look at it. It could be subjective, right? So we've identified based on the 2018, 2019 year, how much use we were getting at a Rontalken Field that was not HOPS-related. So we have that number. So we're starting with that. And then we're looking at other opportunities at existing sites within the city that may be underutilized. So if we could just move, let's say we used to have some soccer games, but now we may not be able to have those soccer games at Rontalken Field. We move them over to the stadium, go to our stadium, because it may have not been utilized at that time. Those opportunities are very minimal. So we're looking at other sites. And the Brown Middle School is just an example of a site. There's others that the Parks Department has looked at. And we've quantified how much use we can get out of it. So it's an hour-to-hour calculation. But it's also a month-to-month calculation because there's sometimes during the year that nobody wants to play outside because, right? We can't assume that use will be made up in July because it just didn't work out that way. So we have to live it from a month-to-month perspective, almost a week-to-week perspective based on the seasons here. So we've identified some sites that we can use. And depending on how much use we lose at Rontalken Field, so assuming we lose 100%. What you saw in the orange, you know, might go back to that slide, Suzanne? So what you'll see in the orange is basically a footprint of what we would need to make up based on losing 100% of the use of Rontalken Field. Now that being said, we might not use 100%. The HOPS may say, look, these weeks during the year, you guys can have access to it. So the cost associated with building improvement somewhere else will go down. So that's the philosophy we've been using, but again, it's still in the works.
Quick clarification on that. Is this being framed within the context of this loss of use during any regular season once this construction is finished or is it also during construction?
We're still working through that. We know there'll be some impact during construction.
Right.
And it will be temporary for a year or two depending on the construction sequence and improvements in the building. We are looking at it more from like ultimate, right? Because we know there will be that temporary impact as well.
So I'm going to express some concerns that I have about the project. And this is not to in any way say that I'm not a supporter of the HOPS and going forward with this. I just am cognizant of an environment that has a lot of uncertainty with respect to capital, construction costs, even design costs. Also, bond issuance, the cost of bonded choice and what are obligation on most of the basis in the HOPS as well in terms of in that obligation in this environment. So I would suggest that we be pretty realistic about budgeting and try to make projections on the very front side to see what we can do for the constraints and the uncertainty that we, we're dealing with projects right now that there's supply chain reductions and that changes the schedule and that changes the cost, those kinds of things. So I'd just be very cognizant of that. I'm also a little bit concerned about in my experience in other projects is that the concept and design is packaged in a way that is, wow, this is incredible. And how can we possibly lose an element of this, you know, design as presented? And it sort of starts to put a lot of momentum behind a project that may come in at a cost that we just don't want to bear. My understanding is that our commitment is 40 million. And I would just hate to see us in a position where we have to go back to the public and to the HOPS and say, we just can't do anymore of this. So that's why I say on the front side, project those costs, finance it, not just the construction cost, but the financing costs and every aspect of this thing. And make sure that we're prioritizing the improvements that we are essential to the success, future success of the HOPS first. And then add in those amenities that we all like to see in a state that's, I just have to say.
Thanks, Councilor. I think that's our concern too. And we put in the steps along the way to make sure we have, you know, managing the risk basically. We have the steps. You might go into the last slide. Yeah, I can go through the last slide if that's okay. So just for awareness, what happens now after you approve, if you choose to approve items 8.1 and 8.2? So executing the interim agreement, like Suzanne said, that would allow us to move forward with the next phases of the project. That's item 8.1 on your agenda tonight. And then we would also approve an amendment to the contract we have with Mortenson. That's item 8.2. The next phase would be to develop a 10% design, get a more of a master plan look of what the site would look like, get a little bit more definition on the costs and the improvements that we'd be putting into place. At the same time, like Sean mentioned, we finalize the design early work. There's some utilities we know we need to relocate no matter what type of improvement. Some of that early work like that will just get ahead of, because we know that's going to take some time. Like Suzanne mentioned, the interim agreement, which was the item 8.1, would memorialize that the HOPS need to have a financing plan of how they would contribute the additional funding beyond $40 million that exists today by December 31st of this year. The agreement would also have, the agreement that we have with Mortenson and the HOPS would still allow us to checkpoint at 10%. And if we have those things in place, the financing plan being the main thing, we can move forward to 35% design, would also give us some time to do a final agreement with the HOPS, which would memorialize things like loss of use and operations and maintenance of the site. We concurrently finalize the plan of loss of use, have a more detailed manner where we're going to make that up and then build these improvements. And we have our project website updated and we continuously just update, updated with more updates. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? My, I guess the only question I have, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer. I know we don't have any representatives tonight from Short Season LLC, which is the, you know, ownership group for the HOPS. There's almost dead going on in the game tonight, I tell. But everything that we are considering and looking at tonight has also been, you know, shared with them. And the agreement, you know, they are in agreement with this as well.
That's correct.
All right, then, thank you, staff. You're welcome to sit in the first-class seats as you'd like or return, I guess, to coach. So consider approving an agreement with Short Season LLC, the Hillsborough HOPS, for the Rontalken Field remodel and loss of use interim cost allocation related to the design phase of the stadium expansion project. I have motion and a second to approve the agreement.
So I'm moved. Second, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Then may we have a roll call.
Counselors, Valletto?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ace?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Alcare?
Aye.
And Reverend?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda item 8.2, consider approving an amendment to the Design Build Master Contract with MA Mortenson Company related to the Rontalken Field Expansion Project in the amount of $4,500,000. Do you have a motion to approve the amendment?
So I'm moved. Second.
Thanks for both of those. Is there any discussion? Then may we have a roll call.
Counselors, Alcare?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And Reverend?
Aye.
Valletto?
Aye.
Ace?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries and that will hear from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things that I want to share with everybody tonight. First off, you've already heard these things and I'm going to reiterate. There's a couple of important dates coming up. First is August 26th, which is Friday. That's the deadline to file the city recorder's office to run the city council in the November 8th general election. And as a reminder, councilors, serve a four-year term that will be in January. And the other big date is Monday, September 5th. That's the deadline to apply via part of the Civic Leadership Academy. And not true, we've ever had a topic of the Civic Leadership Academy as intriguing as this year with the council boundary every time. The 2022 members will have a very important role of recommending new boundaries. And if you're interested in learning more, there's an upcoming, sorry, Suzanne, a little bit. There's an upcoming meet and greet event on Tuesday, August 30th. And you're going to get all the details on the city website. Second, is a quick one for our picks in the park free summer movie series. We have two more movies coming up. The first is Princess Bride, which is a classic for anybody who's never seen it. This Friday, the Regal Woods nature park. And while we don't talk about Bruno, we do talk about Encanto, which will be playing at Shadywood Park next Friday, August 26th. It's very addicting music. My kids have it all memorized, so I would highly encourage everybody to go to that one. And hats off to our park recreation team for hosting these great summertime experiences for everyone to enjoy. And finally, I just want to give a quick kudos to our library staff and our public works department, facilities team for going above and beyond what they would normally do in a kind of unpleasant way. It happened the last month, 22-year-old flushed their mom's keys down the toilet at Shu Park Library. You might assume that, for admittedly well, those keys are a goner. But our staff wanted to do everything they could to try and Emily, Dosty, and Jesse Fixon, a facility scene, pulled off the upset by retrieving the keys. And when the mom came back to get the keys, she was so happy, she brought a cake to thank our staff. It shows how each day and sometimes in the strangest of places, we have an opportunity positively to impact our residents' lives. And we want to thank the entire city of Hillsborough team and staff all that did to make those residents happy. Thank you.
Thank you. So I won't repeat in mine some of the things that Robby said. I will remind folks that the Utilities Commission quarterly report is available. And for those community members who wish to be informed of city council matters, can sign up to receive Happening at Hillsborough newsletter. The Spanish language updates are also available through Cessando Huto's email newsletter. So with that, we will adjourn our city council meeting. We will reconvene at 8:45 in executive session of your ORS 192.660 parentheses to H. And if action needs to be taken, the council will do so in a regular session. So that we are adjourned.